Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. Qulap peela bine dixshundallah so fevou. We will start the special session of the 56th Jalsas Salana, that is the annual convention of the Ahmadiyya Muslim community in Mauritius, with the Talaud Quran, recitation of the Holy Quran by brother Razabakat. Alquranatullah. A'udz Billahi minash shayyatu ni radhim. Ya ayyuha alladziina amanu anfiku minmaa razaqonakum min qubl. Min qublai an yatiya yoomun la bai'afiihi wa la khulatu wa la shafa'ah. Wal kafirona hummuz walimun. Allah la ilaha illa hu alhayul qayyum. La taqzhuhu sinatu wa la nau. Lahu ma fis samawati wa ma fil ar. Manzaalladzi yashfagun dharu illa bi idnih. Yalamu ma bain aidihim wa ma xalfahum. Wa la yuhi'tunabishayim min ilmihi illa bima shaa. Waseag kurthiyu samawati wa alar. Wa la yau'duhu hifzuhuma wa huwal aliyyu azim. La ikraha fi addeen. Qattabayna roshdu min alghay. Famin yaqfuru bi tahu'ti wa yu'min billah. Fa qodistamsaka bi l'urwati l'usqaa la infisamala. Wa allahu samiyyu alim. Allah waliyyu alladziina amanu yu'hrijuhu min al'zulmati illa annuur. Wal ladziina kafaru awliyamu tahu'tu yu'hrijuhunahum min annuur illa zulmat. The verses which had been recited by Razabakat comes from Surah al-Bakarah, chapter 2, and the few verses which were recited contain one particular verse, which is termed the loftiest verse of the Holy Quran. I have the pleasure now to invite my brother Zahid Napol to give you a translation of the recitation which had just been made.
Assalamualaikum. Saban bhehseki, mofre Razabakat une fek liye, through the chapter 2, verses 255 to 258. O ban ki croo depense da provision ki nu fine aqodze. Avan ki sajoo la vini, qodze pa poena, ni transaksiun, ni l'amitiyeh, ni interseksion. E ban mekryon ki ban injust. Allah, o ken padin dadorachon excepteli. Di toule tan vivant, li existepa li mem. E lo li mem, li existence tou kitzeuse depang. Ni assuplissement, ni sebe'epa trapli. Po li tou sa ki deban lechel et tou sa ki lo la ter. Ki sana, ki kapave intersekt da se presence sans se permission? Li kon sa ki divan banla et sa ki deyebanla. E banla pasasi nonni, da Allah se konessans, souf sa ki li liu li. Se tron, li kuvia ban lechel et la ter. Et maintien sa deyla pa fatigli. Et li mem, li bien eau da se glora et li bien grand. Pina kontrae da la religion, certainement, fin na distinction entre vraie danse et l'égalman. Don, di moun ki refise les li ki depa ban transgresser et ki croo da Allah, certainement, li fina trap un tel poigné solide qui impossible ki sa kasi. Et Allah, li bien tendé, li kon tou. Allah, li camarade ban di moun ki croo. Li tiezut depi tou tsaout obskerité pour amenzut vers la lumière. E ban ki pa croo, ena pou camarade ban transgresser ki tiezut depi da la lumière pour amenzut vers tou tsaout obskerité. Sabanla, ki pou ban habitan di fe, zut pourez longtemps là-dedans. Amin.
We will now have the pleasure of listening to a nazam from our brother Khalim Soudan.
Assalamualaikum. Khalifa ke ham hae. Voh dil hae hamara. Aka hamara. Khalifa ke ham hae. Voh dil hae hamara. Aka hamara. Khalifa ke ham hae. Jo talhaanehaathon pe tiroon ko khaya. Fidaaho ke aka pe sab kuch lutaya. Usi ke tarah ham hi uffnaa karenge. Alam di ne ahmad ko girne na dengi. Ke zinda jamat ka yeh istyarah. Khalifa ke ham hae. Voh dil hae hamara. Aka hamara. Khalifa ke ham hae. Mohabbatekinaare labon pe saja kar. Diloon me masihai shamee jala kar. Zamike kinaron ko roshan karenge. Wafaon pe zinda rehenge, marenge. Karenge zamanen me ucha manarat. Khalifa ke ham hae. Voh dil hae hamara. Aka hamara. Khalifa ke ham hae. Jo ehde wafa hae nibhaege aka. Tere hukm pe ja lutayege aka. Na hamka me Musa ke tarah kahenge. Ke ham nur di ne Mohammed banenge. Hamme az muhammat ataa xudaya. Khalifa ke ham hae. Voh dil hae hamara. Aka hamara. Khalifa ke ham hae. Jo kabul me likhi gayi thi kahani. Masih ki sadakat ki zinda nishani. Ham apni wafa pe na harfan dengi. Toumheh dil diya hae. Toumheh ja bhi dengi. Huzour aap karke dekhe ishara. Khalifa ke ham hae. Voh dil hae hamara. Aka hamara. Khalifa ke ham hae. Khalifa hamara. Voh dil hae hamara. Aka hamara.
The Ahmadiyya Muslim community in Mauritius celebrates or holds its annual convention every year. And this year is the 56th convention that we are holding in Mauritius. We gather for those three days so as to have spiritual benefits, so as to reinforce the spirit of brotherhood among our brothers and sisters. But we also take the opportunity to open up to our fellow countrymen. And we hold a special session where we explain, and we receive our guests and we explain who we are, what we do, and what is the Ahmadiyya Muslim community. Before I pass on to the guests for their address, we would like on behalf of the Ahmadiyya Muslim community in Mauritius to take the opportunity to mark our solidarity with the Rohingya Muslims. It is now well documented that tens of thousands of Rohingya, a Muslim ethnic minority group, are fleeing persecution in Myanmar. At least 270,000 Rohingya have already fled northern Myanmar into Bangladesh in the past two weeks. And more than 1,000 people have been killed in the violence, according to the UN estimates. All UN aid works in the conflict area has been blocked by the Myanmar government. And this is a human tragedy. The Ahmadiyya Muslim community has already issued a communique under the hand of its president Khalifa, Hazrat Muzru Rahmat. And we in Mauritius here would like to tell our brothers and sisters that we understand the pains of persecution. And this is why we would like to mark our solidarity with them. Having said that, I now have the pleasure to call upon the Minister of Arts and Culture, Honorable Pradeep Ruppan, who is a friend of the community, but at the same time is the official delegate of the Prime Minister, whom we had invited and who had graciously accepted to mark his presence. But unfortunately, due to urgent business, he has been unable to be with us today and has requested Minister Ruppan to replace him and to deliver a message on his behalf. I have the pleasure now to call upon Minister Ruppan to deliver his speech.
Thank you, Mr. Mubarak. Mr. Musa Tuju, President of the Ahmadiyya community. My dear colleague, Mr. Yogi Tashomindaden. The Lord Mayor of Portweiss. Madame the Mayor of Katowbaun. Mr. Boubarak Ahmad Budan. Dishing with guests, brothers and sisters of the Ahmadiyya community, respected Malanars. Good afternoon, Assalamualaikum. First of all, I wish to present officially the apologies of the Honorable Prime Minister, who has, as just stated, been unable to attend due to a last-minute commitment. And it is my privilege as Minister of Arts and Culture to represent him today. In fact, personally for me, it's a honour to be here since I have known so many of my friends who come from this community and whom I have known and whom I cherish. Whilst coming here, my mind went back when I was still student of the primary school, when I had as my primary school teacher, one Mr. Sukya. I also remember when I was in the tertiary sector teaching, I had also another lady friend who happened to be also from this community, just as when I was studying to become a lawyer. And I still remember that on the last occasion when you had your gathering in Rose Hill, I just had a very quick visit because I had some other commitment. And this gives me a pleasure today to be here once again amongst you. I would like first of all to join in with Mr. Budan to also have a special thought for the Rohingya Muslims in Myanmar. And we just pray that ultimately we have restraint. I hope that a solution can be reached the earliest. May I also take the opportunity to greet Madame Speaker, Mrs. Anumanji, who just joined us. It's for me a great pleasure to be amongst you. And I understand that this convention is a regular feature where brothers and sisters of the Ahmadiyya community gather together to reflect on present issues, try to resource yourself spiritually, try to create a better bonding. And also it's an act of openness where you also invite other brothers and sisters from Mauritius to join you in this venture. I have no doubt that this event will enrich each and every one of you. It will be an occasion for sharing, for brotherhood, and also to have a positive vision of life. Especially at a juncture where the world, we are finding so much of intolerance, extremism, and where it's need for us to pray for peace. Internal peace as well as peace among all our brothers and sisters. We should also have a special thought for the worldwide spiritual leader, Hazrat Mizra Mazoor Ahmed. A band of peace who had a very simple and profound motive, which I have seen while entering this hall today. Love for all, hatred for none. And I believe that this teaching is topical and should be spread. As we know that message of peace is a cure to all the ills of society. We are all in Mauritius privileged that we have so many different cultures living side by side. We are also grateful that we have been able to instill a culture of coexistence and tolerance. Just to state a living example, yesterday, the Prime Minister himself and many of the members of Cabinet and MPs, we were at Tombo Peavale. There also to show our tolerance, to show our concern for our brothers and sisters, and to be, to share with them a special moment. We do that, like many other countries, in our constitution. We guarantee freedom of conscience, the right to manifest and propagate once old religion, to worship and practice whatever you believe in. But it is not the only country. But unfortunately, in so many countries, these provisions, which are so close to human beings, are not necessarily being put into practice. But we are fortunate here at Mauritius. We have a shining example of tolerance. And this is in fact one of the reasons why Mauritius is considered to be one of the countries where we are not in conflict. We are a multicultural society where people of different religions, languages, and culture coexist in a single community. And also we blend with each other. Because blending is not just to interact, it's to understand each other, to be part of their feelings, to be part in their moment of sorrow, to be part also in a moment of celebrations. And this is in fact the greatest wealth that we have inherited from our forefathers and which is a region why we have been able to be where we are today. The government highly appreciates the involvement of the Ahmadiyya movement. And I must say that the respect is reciprocal. We know that the Ahmadiyya movement has always been with government, helping us in different spheres, charity, social activities. And also within government itself, we have got so many of our prominent civil servants, officers, past and present, with whom we have been interacting and who has participated in the construction of modern Mauritius. The only wish is that this collaboration shall continue, that together we shall endeavor to promote tolerance, brotherhood, and mutual respect. I won't dwell in a long speech because I won't pretend to be able to give you much about the history or the various teachings of the Ahmadiyya movement. And I believe that there are many learned speakers who have and will deliver speeches and will be able to guide you further. But I'll end up by wishing all of you well. And I hope that you will be able to unite yourselves even better with this convention and that each one of you will leave this convention better armed to know yourself, to interact with all our brothers and sisters, and also to contribute to the making of peace all throughout the country and of the world. Thank you very much.
Ladies and gentlemen, allow me to welcome in our midst Madame Speaker and Mr. Anumanji, and also our friend Mr. Ajay Ganesh, former minister and Secretary General of the Movement in Mauritius. Ladies and gentlemen, I have now the pleasure to invite the Amir Jamaat, that is the head of the Ahmadiyya community in Mauritius, to deliver his speech.
Allah be with you, peace be upon him. Madame Speaker, Honorable Ministers Pradeep Rupen and Yogi Dasa Minadan, Lord Mayor Mr Daniel Laurent, Madame Radwa, Mayor of Katlebone, Mr Darlet, Mayor of Aqua Phoenix, all protocol observed. Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. May the blessings with the peace and blessing of Allah Almighty be with you. It gives me great pleasure to address you this afternoon to welcome you most cordially at this special session of the fifty-sixth annual convention of the Ahmadiya Muslim community of Mauritius. I would also like to welcome those who have travelled from their respective countries to attend this blessed gathering. A warm welcome as well to our special guests from all walks of life who have taken time out of their busy schedule to be with us this afternoon. On behalf of the Ahmadiya Muslim community and on my own name, I would like to extend to you our appreciation accepting our invitation and gracing this faction. We are gratified. What is the purpose of the Jalas Salana? Let me provide a bit of context. The annual convention commonly called Jalas Salana was established by His Holiness Hazrat Milda Gulam Ahmed of Khadijah, founder of the Ahmadiya Muslim community in Islam with a special purpose. In his own words, I will quote, "All sincere souls who have entered the fall of this humble one should know that the purpose of pledging allegiance is to dampen the worldly order so that the heart is engulfed in the love of the bountiful God and of the Holy Prophet, peace and blessings beyond him, and to develop such a state of detachment that the final journey does not seem an unwelcome prospect. But in order to achieve this, it is necessary to stay in my company and to spend a portion of one's life in this cause so that if God Almighty so wills, through witnessing some definite signs, weaknesses, infirmity, and tardiness may be overcome and perfect faith may be born resulting in fervor and passionate order. One should always strive to achieve this goal and pray that God may grant this opportunity. Until this happens, it is essential to meet me now and then. Bayet, oh, the oath of allegiance, is devoid of all blessings and is a mere formality if one does not care to meet me since due to the physical inability, lack of resources, and long distances, it is not possible. And most hearts are not yet endowed with such ordered desire that they should bear the greatest trouble and hardship for the meeting. It seems appropriate, therefore, that the three days of every year should be fixed for a gathering in which all my devoted followers should, God willing, be present. This gathering will be devoted to the exposition of such truth and spiritual insight as are necessary for the promotion of faith and certainty and spiritual understanding. And there will be special prayers and attention for the participant. It's not an ordinary convention." He goes on to say, and I quote, "It is essential for all those who can afford to undertake the journey that they should, that they must come to attend this convention which embodies many blessed objectives. They should disregard minor inconveniences in the cause of Allah and His Prophet, peace beyond him. Allah yields reward to the sincere person at every step of their way and no labor or hardship undertaken in His way ever goes to waste. I reemphasize that you must not rank this convention in the same league as other ordinary human assemblies. This is a phenomenon that is based purely on the divine help for the propagation of Islam," unquote. "The promised Messiah and Mehdi, peace beyond him, has also prayed for those attending the convention. In whichever capacity you are here today, you have the blessed and humble prayers of the promised Messiah with you," I quote. "I conclude with the prayers that everyone who travels for attending this convention, that is for the sake of Allah, may Allah, the exalted, be with you. Reward him in abundance measure, have mercy on him, ease up for him his circumstances of hardship and anxiety and eliminate his anguish and grief. May he grant him freedom from single, from every single hardship and lay open for him the ways of achieving his cherished goals and raise him up on the day of judgment among those of his servants who are the recipients of his blessings and mercy. May he be their guardian in their absence until after the journey comes to an end. Oh Allah, oh Sublime One and best of all bounties, the ever merciful and one who resolves all problems, do grant all these prayers and grant us victory over our opponents with dazzling signs because you alone have all the proudness and power." Amin, amin, unquote. Being given that the community has grown to such an extent that it is not physically possible to accommodate all members in one single place and associated with it, the fact that not all members can and are able to travel to Khadijah, we are now whole, we now whole in every country where we are established, the local convention, but with the same objectives and purpose. For the Mauritian community, it is our fifty-sixth convention. Who is an Ahmadi Muslim? Distinguished guests, ladies and gentlemen, you must have heard about the Ahmadiya Muslim community. We are known for the persecution we undergo at the hands of other people. But today I have chosen to address you on who we are and what we stand for. Let me just sum it up in one word. We are Muslims in our own right. Our religion is Islam. Our master is the Holy Prophet of Islam and our book is the Holy Quran. We uphold the unity of Allah firmly in the words of the promised Messiah and I quote, "Our paradise lies in our God. Our highest delight is in our God for we have seen Him and have found every beauty in Him. This worth is worth procuring though one might have to lay down one's own life to procure it," unquote. As regard the Holy Prophet, peace beyond him, we believe him to be the seal of prophets. For us, he is a son of the spiritual world and will continue to enlighten the world till the end of time. The promised Messiah, peace beyond him, says, and I quote, "The life of the Holy Prophet, peace beyond him, was a life of great success. In his high moral qualities, his spiritual power, his high resolve, the excellence and perfection of his teaching, his perfect example and the acceptance of his prayers." In short, in every aspect of his life, he exhibited such bright signs that even a person of low intelligence, provided he is not inspired but unreasonable rank and enmity, is forced to confess that he was a perfect example of manifestation of divine qualities and was a perfect man," unquote. In so far as the Holy Quran is concerned, we consider it as a perfect book and the exalted word of Allah. The promised Messiah, peace beyond him, held the following beliefs in respect of the Holy Quran and I quote, "I hold very firmly that for your guidance God has provided three things. The foremost among these is the Holy Quran, which sets forth the unity of God, His grandeur and greatness, and decides on all points in dispute. Therefore beware, do not take a single step in contravention of anything contained in the Holy Book. Verily, I tell you truly that whosoever evades even the least of the seven hundred commandments embodied in the Holy Quran, he slams the doors of salvation upon himself. The real and perfect path of salvation has been opened only by the Holy Quran. All others were only its shadows. Therefore you should study this holy scripture with the utmost attention and deepest thought and you should love it as you have never loved anything else. For indeed as God has conveyed to me, that is all the good lies in the Holy Quran. All kinds of goods are to be found in it and this is the truth," unquote. Having elaborated on the three fundamental elements of our faith, I would also like to emphasize that we hold firm to the five pillars of Islam and the six articles of faith. Why was Jamaat Ahmadiya created then? The logical question that will come to your mind after having listened to what I have said above is, if you are Muslim in your own right, then what is the need for the Ahmadiya community? Once again, I would like to quote the promised Messiah, peace beyond him, to answer this logical question. In defining his mission, the promised Messiah, peace beyond him, wrote, and I quote, "The purpose for which God has appointed me is that I should remove the malaise that afflicts the relationship between God and His creatures and should restore the relationship of love and sincerity between them through the proclamation of truth. I should bring about peace by putting an end to religious wars and should manifest the verities which have become hidden from the eyes of the world. I am called upon to demonstrate that spirituality which has been overlaid by selfish darkness. It is for me to demonstrate in practice and not only in words the divine attributes which penetrate into the hearts of people and are manifested through prayer and concentration. Most of all, it is my purpose to plant once more in the hearts of people the pure and shining unity of God which is free from every suspicion of paganism and which was and which has completely disappeared. All this will be accomplished not through my power but through the power of Him who is the God of heaven and earth." He also stated, "God wishes to found a community of the faithful to manifest His glory and power. He will make the community grow and prosper and will cause it to establish the love of God, righteousness, purity, peace, and good with all men. This shall be a group of men devoted to God. He shall strengthen them with His own spirit and bless them and purify them. He shall multiply them exceedingly. He shall make the community grow so that so much in numbers and progress shall amaze the world. My true followers shall excel every other people. There shall always rise among them till the day of judgment person who will be chosen ones of God in every respect," unquote. Once alone in a remote corner of the earth named Khadijah, today the movement which was started in eighteen eighty-nine by Miza Gulam Ahmed has reached the shores of two hundred and seven countries and is still expanding. Its message, love for all and hatred for none, is a vivid example of its mission. Distinguished guests, ladies and gentlemen, Ahmadi's around the world take the oath of allegiance, the oath of allegiance when they enter the fall of the Ahmadiya community. What is the oath of allegiance? The promised Messiah says, and I quote, "Bayet, that is the oath of allegiance, truly means to sell oneself. Its blessing and impact are based on that condition. Just as a seed is sown on the ground, the original condition is that the hand of the farmer has sown it but it is not known what will happen to it. If the seed is of good quality and possesses the capacity to grow, then with the grace of Allah, the Almighty, and as a consequence of the work done by the farmer, it grows until one grain turns into thousands grain. Similarly, the person taking bayet has, taking the oath of allegiance, that is the bayet, has to first adopt loneliness and humidity and has to distance himself from his ego and selfishness. Then that person becomes fit for growth. But he who continues to hold on to his ego along with taking bayet, that is the oath of allegiance, will never receive any grace. To take bayet means handing over your life to Allah Almighty. It means today we have sold our life to Allah Almighty. It is wrong to say that by trading in the path of Allah, anybody would ultimately suffer a loss. The truthful can never be in a state of loss. Only he who is false, that is for who the world against breaks the pledge that he has made with Allah Almighty, he is the one who will suffer," unquote. You will know therefore that Ahmadi's are called upon to subscribe to the highest moral and spiritual values and they are called in fact to sell themselves to the almighty Allah. A further requirement of an Ahmadi Muslim is that he is under the guidance of a spiritual Khalifa. In fact, the Ahmadiya Muslim community subscribes to the system of Khilafat in accordance with the prophecies of the Holy Prophet, peace beyond him. The system of Khilafat was established in nineteen oh eight after the sad demise of the promised Messiah, peace beyond him, and has now been in place for over one hundred and nine years. The Ahmadi's obey and follow their caliphs and renew their oath of allegiance yearly. The Ahmadiya Muslim community was established in Mauritius in nineteen fifteen and has since grown in a vibrant and lively community which has left its mark on the history of our country. When it comes to patriotism and love to the country, I must emphasize that we would always be in the forefront of our nation building activity and be the frontliners to defend the values of our beloved motherland. We are proud to be one of the flowers of the Mauritian bouquet and we will continue to work hand in hand with any government to advance the cause of our nation. This is exactly what we do in every country wherever we have a mission. Distinguished guests, ladies and gentlemen, I have tried to provide you through this short speech the distinguishing elements that makes an Ahmadi and the Ahmadiya Muslim community. We live in harmony with our fellow countrymen and we seek to promote love and peace in our environment. I do hope that now you will have a better idea of who we are and what we stand for. Thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you very much, Amir Sahib, for this enlightening speech where you have laid down for us what the Ahmadi is and what we stand for. Ladies and gentlemen, we have reached the end of this special session. Would like to thank all our guests who have taken time, as we said, out of their busy schedule to be present among us this afternoon. Their presence is a mark of the love that they have towards the community. And as Minister Rupen said, this is a reciprocal love. We love our countrymen and we love our country and we love those who manifest their love towards us. Would like to thank all those who have contributed to make this session a success and those who have worked hard for days and maybe for weeks and who have spared no time and no effort to make this convention a success and a place where people can find peace, can find brotherhood, and can find friendship. We hope that our guests... We hope that our guests will continue to honor us with their presence in the future and that they will always be there for us when we need them and we will also be there when they need us. With these words, ladies and gentlemen, I would like to invite the Amir Jamaat to conduct a silent prayer. The members of the community will pray silently, following the Amir Jamaat. The other members of the gathering, they can pray in their own way. Amir Sahib prayers.
Amin, Allahumma.
Amin.